First item would be to consider the approval of the minutes for the meeting of, excuse me, September 13th. Those minutes were presented in the council packet. Any questions or comments on the minutes as presented?
I mean, October 13th.
Oh, two, excuse me, October 13th. Only a month, October 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Kissling?
I'll second it.
Second by Bounce. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Also available for your review was the claims docket. The treasurer's office, any questions or comments on the claims as presented?
Motion to approve the claims.
Motion by Kissling to approve the claims?
I'll second it.
Second by McFerrin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. At our previous meeting, we passed on first reading ordinance number 202025, which was an ordinance amending the Code of Ordances for Parking and restricting parking on North Giger Street from Fourth Street, on the west side of Giger Street, from Fourth Street to a distance 85 feet south of Fourth Street. Again, we passed that on first reading on a previous meeting. Chance for review and then getting comments from the public on that proposal. So, any comments or questions from the council before we consider this ordinance for final adoption? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 202025, amending the Huntingburg Code of Ordances, Chapter 75, for no parking on portions of a designated street within the city of Huntingburg. Do I motion?
Motion made.
Motion by McFerrin. Second by Dubon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Tippel?
Dubon. McFerrin.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Where?
Four ayes, one absent.
Four ayes, no absent, one absent, so ordinance number 2025 is hereby adopted. Next up, we have a Consider a Resolution to Apply for an Economic Development Authority Grant. Just wanted to update you, you have a couple documents there. One of those is, if you recall, the council, as we were going through the application process for the wastewater project, we did seek funding from the, from the EDA under the CARES funding provision and asked for a grant to supplement that project. We received a letter, and you have a copy of that letter, from the EDA notifying us that that request was not funded. It was, and it gave some reasons why that did not reach a funding level. In a discussion with the gentleman from EDA who we received a letter from, he suggested that this program again was funding under the CARES Act. There is a second program that also deals with projects of this type. It's the Rural Development Program. And they were, we were encouraged or asked that we would consider to apply for a grant under that, under that program. The limit for that program is $3 million. So, what we have in front of you here is a resolution from the City Council committing funds to the wastewater project and to, for the application of the $3 million in funding from the Rural Development Program. In discussion with Lisa Galhousen, Region 15, who did the previous application, a lot of it is, it'll be a very, very similar application. The data, the scope of the project, everything in that previous application is pretty much transferable to the new document, or to the new application. We do have a phone call scheduled for next week, early next week, with the grant administrator just to go through and make sure that we are in the right path for that application. And so, in that amount, in that resolution, there is amounts to pay for the administrative costs with Region 15, but that would be, should we receive that grant. So, again, this is the same project, but potentially different funding source. Got anything?
No, it's true.
I'm not missing anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, just want to make sure.
It was this EDA, that was the one we were thinking we may get up to 8 million?
We had applied for 8 million and...
Were denied.
And then were denied that, and it got seized.
It's under CARES Act.
Yeah, it's under CARES Act. And I think what you can see in the letter from there, it was a highly, highly, highly competitive program. And...
And we didn't make the case for significantly dealing with...
With COVID.
With COVID. And that's, that was their, that was the basis for the money.
Right. So, they still feel we have a strong, a strong project, and the commitment from our industry is still something that would be valued in this next application. And one thing that we did, and I think it was clear, and we did have the discussion amongst the wastewater group that put the proposal together. Now, the rates that we submitted and have approved were not dependent on any additional funding. It's based, you know, we didn't base that rate on any additional funding from EDA. So, anything that we get in this one would supplement what was already committed through, from the funding by the city through the USDA program.
Actually, any amount of grant would have a possibility of reducing.
Right.
It just depends on the project.
Any questions from the council? So, this would be Resolution 2020...
202030.
202030. Resolution 202030, Resolution of the City of Huntingburg regarding the Commitment of Funds for the Wastewater Project of Huntingburg and an Economic Development Public Works Program Grant. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution number 202030?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Bounce?
I'll second it.
Second by Kissling? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Roll call, please.
Dubon?
Aye.
McFerrin?
Aye.
Bounce?
Aye.
Kissling?
Aye.
Where? Four ayes, one absent.
Four ayes, one absent. Resolution 202030 is hereby approved. Now, time for reports from our utilities. Energy Superintendent, Mr. Rutterfield?
Evening, council.
Evening.
Start off with the gas department. We installed five new services this month. We have six on file. Most of them are out at Hunter's Crossing 2, which is becoming pretty close to complete. Won't be long to be starting in Hunter's Crossing 3. In this last month, the crew's been working on their gas, annual gas survey. Pretty well took up the whole month. As you can see in the pictures, that's the vehicle we use to do the survey. The front end of the vehicle, the little cones hanging down, that's what the gas detectors are. And we had to modify the exhaust on the backside because that was throwing some false readings to us. So, we figured out that's where the problem was coming from. And then the other sheet, we did cover almost 40 miles of main and services. And the number of meters in the services, 575, we checked. Come up with 19 leaks, but they're really Class III leaks, which they're not hazardous. And you have like 15 months to go back and get them fixed. But we decided it's best to follow up and fix them right away. So, they're done fixing, over with. So, we didn't have zero below ground, I think, which is excellent recordings. So, we are working on getting all them little small leaks fixed. But that's pretty well what they've been doing the whole month. We do 1/4 of the system in every, all the business districts every year. On the fourth year, we've got to have an independent third-party company come in and do it. So, and that costs about $7,000, $8,000 every time, every year we do that. So, that's why we come up with this, doing it ourselves and saving it $7,000, $8,000 a year. And then we received our annual rebate from our PFA discount program, which ended up being $28,228.80. That's received once a year. It's a portion of the discount. The other discount is taken off monthly. So, that is a decision of what we need to do with the $28,000. It's kind of up to the council for what they want to place that money. I think Tom, we kind of discussed putting it back in the tracker.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's a reduction of the cost of gas. So, I think the customers are participating, the savings are...
It's a, like I say, we have a, it's a third of the original discount. The other discount is taken off monthly. But we do receive this lump sum once a year. So, it'd be probably getting this amount about every September, October. We'd like to decide where to, I guess, put it.
It's not restricted by any manner, but Tom's suggestion, and it is, it goes, it would go, you know, to go to the rate payer, it's going to be applied as part of the tracker for the year. The other option would be just to go to operating fund and use for operating expenses. But John and I discussed, he said there's really not a pending need right now of, you know, equipment or whatever that's out there that this might be applied to, so...
Department's in real good shape on equipment-wise, so...
So, we make this decision every year, we put it in?
I guess, yeah.
So... I mean, it's not, it's an annual decision, it's not like... Right. Yeah. Not a... Yeah, if we, if the department was in dire need of equipment or repair or something, I would, I would go that way. But if we're, we're in good shape financially, we're in good shape mechanically, and I would probably lean toward sending it back to the rate payer, you know?
What I was thinking is we could apply it on a...
Residential?
Well, on a, on a monthly basis rather than...
Right.
So, it hits everybody evenly rather than everybody...
Spread it out over the...
The summertime people, which don't use a lot of gas...
Right, yeah.
Should get, shouldn't get all the benefit of it.
Right. So, would it be over a 12-month period for it?
It'd be like from, well, we can't do it now, but it would be probably, we've already done November, it'd probably be December, four words for 12 months.
December to December. I think that's fair. Over the period of customers, and how many customers do you have in that system?
3,600, some other customers.
It's not going to be a big amount, Ted, he won't have much money.
But it counts. But it counts.
It counts.
So, with that, do we have a motion to reset the funds and to apply it to the rate tracker for the coming 12-month period? Motion to that effect?
No, I'll make a motion to that.
Motion by McFerrin? Second. Second by Dubon? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Any questions on the gas? Moving to the electric. Once again, we installed six new services, mainly in Hunter's Crossing 2. We did finish up all the connections at Hunter Crossing 3, and are ready for the house hookups. Also installed all the streetlights, they're all up and going now. Got all that done. Then the crews were working on eliminating a three-phase power line that run along the south side of highway from basically the golf course to the boat ramp area. That line's usually run through a stretch of trees during storms and snow and ice. It usually poses a problem for outages. So, we eliminated that. And the feed for the water plant and a few of them houses, we got a real nice, strong line that comes down County Road 400. So, we decided to eliminate a weaker line going down the highway. So, it will eliminate any future outages. And then we, has about 1,600-foot span. Then we did do some underground outboard by St. Henry. It's about 1,000-foot. Once again, it ran along a tree line. We jumped across the road, we went underground, we installed conduit. So, last week, the crews got that line all energized, and we got it all switched over. So, now we took down the old lines that run along the stretch of trees. So, that's all done. And I have a quote for underground primary wire. With Hunter's Crossing 3, Steinkamp's addition, Chestnut Gardens coming, the underground project out by St. Henry. So, our underground wire is getting pretty low. And we did replace a section of wire at Timber Ridge that went bad. So, I feel like we need to restock our underground primary wire. The quote I give you is per foot. There's a 5% random length there. It's not exactly, you order 2,500-foot reel, you may not get 2,500, you may get 2,535. It says whenever the guy hits the cut button. On Friday, it maybe hit it quick, but come Monday morning, maybe it's slow hit. So, it's a 5% difference. But the price per foot is guaranteed. What I would suggest is not to exceed, the quote is 32,160, but I would recommend not to exceed 34,000. That would give room for that 5% difference.
Questions?
How much fluctuation do you see in pricing on wiring? Is it quite a bit, or...
Fluctuation in...
In the price?
Considered, compared to what?
Like last month or next month?
Does it fluctuate with the market like copper or something like that? I think it's quite...
Not as much, but it's probably not going to get, not going to get cheaper. But there's not a whole lot of fluctuation.
And this, this is the vendor we've used in the past, if you have more...
It's a territorial item. So, they're the only ones that are allowed to sell in this area. And it's a real good wire.
I know, we've got probably plenty of money in the department to pay for it, right, Tom?
Yeah.
I would, with that, having the funding and you need the wire for inventory, I would go ahead and make the motion to let you purchase that.
You want to amount not to exceed 34?
Not to exceed 34 even, that's fine, yes.
Motion by Kissling?
I'll second it.
Second by Bounce? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Any questions on the electric?
Question for John?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Want to report? Check for tomorrow.
Good evening. Our high demand day this month, where last month was 1,825,950 gallons, high production day was 1,195,310 gallons. On Saturday, the 17th, one of our drives, one of our raw water pumps, we are within about a week and a half of starting a new wet well. So, I made a decision that we were not going to replace that drive. And between the two pumps that we have and the one drive, I think we can keep it going until we get the new wet well up and running. And we received notice on the 22nd that our Myex generator actually shipped on the 21st. We received that on the 26th. And right now, it's sitting in place. We're in the process of plumbing it. Our old unit was a 220 unit, single-phase unit. The new one is a three-phase unit. I talked to Mel K. I have included that quote in the board pack, $4,210 to rewire that for three-phase. I didn't put that out to bid because we are averaging spending $6,578.70 a month buying our disinfectant versus generating. So, if I put it out to bid, we'd end up spending another month. We'd spend more on buying our disinfectant than we would letting Mel K do that job. So, I would like your formal blessing on that, if that's...
And they're on site for the...
They are on site, they have the equipment there. I don't believe that anybody else could beat their price anyway.
Exactly, under $5,000 and under your purchasing policy, if it's ordinary routine maintenance or operations, you have authority to do it.
Yeah, I don't think they need approval.
As long as you know where I'm spending my money and why.
It is a, it's actually a, it will be a net gain as you, once you get it on. You'd be spending less a month.
And they are wanting both those units up and ready before they come do startup anyway. So, the longer we put that off, the longer we're going to have to buy bleach. In the distribution end, we had three small leaks, actually, we had four. Three of them up on Eighth Street and one on Jackson. I think we've had some valves turned down on the Main Street project. And I think we've actually reversed the flow in that main, so it should straighten up once, or now that we've got all the valves opened up again. So, circulation should be, and I'm hoping that main settles down. And then Blake, our new employee, has been working on getting his CDL. The new metering system, we continue to have almost no meters failed to report. And with that, I'd like approval to purchase 250 meters at a cost of $243.80 per meter. Last January, I got a quote, our price was supposed to go up 3% in 2020 and another 3% in 2021. But I got a quote from our salesman that excluded that 3%. So, whenever I forwarded that back to EJP, they have agreed to give us a $3,540 credit on our next meter purchase. So, that makes 250 meters at a cost of $57,230. And I'd like approval for that. That should get us within 175 to 200 meters to complete. And once we get those in, Debbie will give us an accurate count. We'll order in enough meters. It's not something you want to put a whole bunch on the shelf because our warranty starts the day they hit my shelf.
You don't want to put them in the field.
Yeah. So, we've got to keep enough to keep the new customers going. But there's no point in having an extra 100 laying there either, so... I would like approval for that.
No problem, no problem with your account? Money's in the account?
Oh, we looked at it, and 250 was within...
That's where you want to be.
I'd make a motion to allow Gary to find the meters.
What's the amount of, what do we approve, the 6770 or the 57230?
I think it's 57230.
Yeah, 57230.
Okay, so the amount of 57,230?
Yes, 57230.
Motion by McFerrin, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bounce? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Now, we'll go to the upgrades. Reynolds has been working outside most of this month, trying to get that closed up, or a lot of that closed up before weather hits. Most of the footers are poured for the new drying bed, and about 3/4 of the walls are poured for the drying beds. The new raw water well is about complete. A lot of the seating has been complete. And then on rainy days, they've been moving in. We saved the last item of that for Mr. John Wetzel. Onto the distribution, the new valve vault at Chestnut and Main is in operation. It will not run on automatic yet. We'll have to get Torque down here to do some programming. But we are able to open and close it by the computer. So, we do that every day. Because of stormwater drain issues, we ended up boring the pipe from about the middle of Steinkamp's parking lot to 12th Street. That makes about 95, in my estimation, and 95% of the pipe work is complete at this point. And they are in the process of switching services north of Sixth Street or 64 on mains that are, have passed pressure tests and back keys. And we now have a plant from NDOT for how to fix the handicap ramps that are at the intersections. Then the solar system, they are in production for the racking, and we should see delivery on solar system by the end of November. That has everything to do except the change order. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Before you, before you leave, the pulpit's there. I know what the cause is, but everybody asks me that we have a water leak north of Rebel Tracks, and I assure them that we do not have a water leak.
No, that, that is a valve stem that's leaking. And I could probably spend $20,000 and go in and fix that valve stem for something that's going to be killed here in the next month. So, I figured it's better to waste $500 than $20,000. That's just my take on it, but that's where I'm at.
You're going to kill that line shortly anyway.
Yes. Soon as we get the customers switched over, that line's going to be dead. Then the leak has to go away.
Correct.
Yes, that's what it is. Just don't want it to freeze for that, any other, anything else that's...
No.
Don, you have...
Mr. Wetzel from Midwestern is here. There is a change order to be considered. And John, just give us a little update on what's going on there. So, John?
Okay, thank you. I just want to piggyback this a little bit on what Gary said, specifically for the distribution system in Division 1. I did want to point out that we did have a change order there for some work at Second Street, and also to increase the time. Substantial completion was here in October, final completions is November. We are not going to meet that. Gary kind of talked about a little bit of the work that still needs to be done. We have a little bit of pipe that needs to be put in, about 100 feet or so at 12th Street and 231 to tie in there. There's a bore that needs to be done underneath 231 at 14th Street. And then, as Gary mentioned, they are switching services over now as we speak. If you drive up and down the 231 corridor, you'll notice the asphalt that still needs to be done down at Chestnut to Maple. We also have some grading work that will need to be done by the new sidewalks as well. So, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that all that work is going to be done here in the next two to three weeks, and we're going to be done by mid-November. That won't happen. We were kind of talking, we may have probably a little bit difference of opinion, maybe I'm a little bit more optimistic. I hope by right around the end of the year, most of these items are done. But I do think some of this cleanup work, especially with some of that dirt work going back up against the sidewalks, that kind of thing, we're still a ways away from it. I wanted to make everybody aware that we are going to run over the time that was actually given to them as an extension, just where we stand on everything. So, if anybody has any further questions on that, or comments on that. But I wish I could tell you it would be done by mid-November, but everything's not going to be done by then. And then the second thing I wanted to discuss was the change order for the water treatment plant work. And just wanted to say that, you know, we've kind of been keeping a laundry list of items as they've come up during construction. We feel like, for the most part, the construction at the water treatment plant has gone very smoothly. However, there have been some items that come up. And has everybody got a chance to review that? We kind of listed them as adds and deducts. And I'd be more than happy to go through line item by line on exactly each one of those were, if you want me to do that, can certainly do that. A couple of the bigger ticket items were deducts. And those, one of the big, you know, the biggest was a deletion of the relocation, the 12-inch finished water main around the new water pump station. And that pump station is east of the plant, down in the low area, close to the high-service pump building. And we did some exploratory digging, Gary's guys did, as we're doing the design of it. But we just weren't 100% sure where exactly that 12-inch main was right there, to kind of X-mark the spot. And we thought we may have to relocate it if we could get, you know, couldn't get things in there. Ultimately, they were able to get things in and not relocate that water main. So, that was a big deduct, that was roughly $30,000. The other thing, we got a deduct for deleting the bypass around the existing raw water pump station. That's due to everybody talking as we're getting ready to put this new pump station in service. We think we can take the old one out of service and pipe through and get that in. We talked about maybe doing the startup on a Saturday or Sunday. But we feel like that can be done, all parties. The city, Reynolds, and Midwestern feel that that can be done. So, that's why that deduct was for that bypass around the existing pump station. Again, we're looking at hopefully the end of next week to be able to start up that station if it all goes according to HOIL here the next week and a half. So, again, I don't mean to, I mean, take a bit more of your time, but I can, if you have any questions on any of these other items, be happy to explain them. Overall, the change order is for a deduct of $30,396. And it would take our original contract price from Reynolds down from $4,880,700 to $4,850,304. We've still got a ways to go. There may be other items that come up. But so far, things have went pretty smooth down there. We really do feel like it.
We attended the most recent meeting, and it was agreed that, you know, but these are the kind of things that are happening as, as the project goes ahead. But periodically, we wanted to bring those to the council. But periodically, we wanted to bring those to the council so it doesn't all come at one time, but this, so this is work. And again, I've liked, from what I've been hearing, a lot of these deducts are because of the conversation that's going on between engineering team, our team, and the construction people. They've been very good about, you know, looking for solutions. Everything, everything doesn't go as planned all the time.
That's for sure.
And we're looking, we're working well together on finding solutions that are best for the project. None of this has any compromise of the final quality of the project.
No, no. So would ask for your consideration of those changes if you see them fit.
Would it be change order number one? Is that correct, John?
Correct, for Division Two.
For Division Two. Any questions? Now I would entertain a motion to approve change order number one for Division Two of the water system improvement project.
Make that move.
Motion by Kissel.
Second it.
Second by McFerrin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, since you are the signatory, would you sign that? Send back to SRF.
We ain't done yet. They're still playing pitch and catch here.
I didn't think a deduct would be vetoed by the board.
I do, I do see that they're working hand in hand here. That helps.
Anything else, John?
Hopefully, the Division Two, you know, we are talking, I think this may be a little optimistic, but Reynolds is, is still looking to start up the new bank of filters and the clarifier and that right around the end of the year. So hopefully, that stays on schedule. And would be looking then to finish up work of March, February to March timeframe there at the plant. Thanks.
That's good. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Mr. Dippel?
I do have, she's put together kind of a history of our tracks program that we, our debt collection service through the Association of Counties in Indiana. This year so far, well, this, it's ended for this year, so it's, we've gotten $18,908.90 as compared to last year. We got $7,600, or $77.91. Some of them are old write-offs, some of them are just bad debts that we have not written off yet, so. Just for your information.
Thank you. How far back does that go? I don't recall. Like, how many years back will it allow?
Well, we, we've gone back, was it six years, Phil?
We're back, we're back six years on open accounts, our accounts that we did not sue on, our accounts in which we had judgments, we went back to the date of the judgment. We can go back 10 years on those on open accounts, on an open account, we'll go back six years.
And that's part of the reason you see an increase because we, we went, we put more on.
I see. Yeah, we added, we added to the list and they collected more.
Good. Good, John. Any other questions for Tom? Any other items from the board? The items from the floor? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kissel to adjourn. Bowles had a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.